Of May 20th, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, we're on item 22A, which is a discussion and recommendations to the board on expenditures for fiscal year 19 dealing with Fuji Park. Mr. Plummel?
Thank you. For the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. I'll just note upfront that these items 22A through E are all related to expenditures from the redevelopment revolving fund. It's kind of a part of the process of authorizing the expenditure. The redevelopment revolving fund is a little unique that we go through the budgeting process and provide budget allocations for these, but NRS also requires the redevelopment authority to make a recommendation in the Board of Supervisors to approve a resolution authorizing the expenditures. So I'll talk a little bit about each of these as we go through the items. This first one is actually for expenditure for this current fiscal year budget that's in this budget and an expense ready to move forward right away. It's for the expenditure of $44,754 for Fuji Park Fairgrounds sound system through the last couple of years in looking at the redevelopment budget and projects to be funded from it. The fairgrounds sound system has come up as a real urgent need because of the events happening this summer. So if you recall, about a month ago, this was shuffled around a little bit in the budget to do this this year and postpone the Bob Boldrick Theater sound system till next fiscal year after July 1st, which expenditure is also on this agenda. But Eric Klug is here from the Parks Department. He's our technical expert and he can answer questions along with probably Jennifer Budge in the audience, too, if you have questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Giomi?
So I guess I'm shocked at the price that we got. I mean, it's great, but I just, I want to ask the question, are we getting what we need here? Because, you know, we had anticipated $100,000 and this is like 66% less than that, which is great, but not the way things seem to have been going lately, so.
Eric Klug, Recreation Program Manager. So we are getting good quality equipment, even though it is at the lower rate. When looking at the two, it's just, one, we're going to be basically paying brand and the other, both are high-quality equipment. It's just got a higher price tag because of the brand.
So you're saying that we'll do what it needs to do?
Both systems will do what we need.
Okay. I noticed that on the bid from Nelson that we're using existing cabling and existing input plates and cabling, is that, do we know that that's in decent shape? Because that seems like one of the most likely points of failure.
So all of the wiring is in good shape. It's the speakers and the amps and the head-end rack that is having the issues. Both of them, both Rocket Labs and Nelson are going to ring it out and if they do have to replace cable, they will.
Okay. And that would be an extra cost, obviously, change order to this.
For both quotes, yes.
And then finally, this is just the fairgrounds and the exterior, not the inside of the building, not the building?
This is just the arena and the small animal and large animal barns. It is not the exhibit hall.
Okay. And are we doing that at some point? Has that been discussed? I don't recall it being brought before us, but have we had complaints about it? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Stacy asked several of my questions. My other question was the perimeter speakers in the Nelson bid. It says it's presumed that the exterior or the existing perimeter speakers are all in good working order and that they accept no responsibility for speakers that are not functioning. But you indicated to me through email that the speakers, the perimeter speakers, all are working at this point?
That is correct, and it's actually one of the few components of the existing system that's still serviceable.
Great. Thank you. And just for the sake of discussion, before we get to discussion, I've made it pretty clear that I'd like to see the master plan finished so that we have an understanding of what work needs to be done and what the appropriate capacity of Fuji Park is. And because of that, I'm going to vote against this item, not because I don't believe that it needs to be done, but only because I think as a matter of principle, I just need to stick to my guns and say I'm not going to agree to any more expenditures at Fuji Park until we complete the master plan, and I know that's in the works. So again, this is just based on principle.
John?
Thank you. Generally speaking, I obviously agree with Brad. It would be best to have a master plan. I'm going to vote for it, but I urge you to, with all alacrity, do as he says, and I know you're on in process, but I like having the master plan in place, too. However, the sound system has been a complaint out there since forever, so I'm going to go with this. But I'll go with him from now on. If there's not a master plan, I won't be voting for anything else for Fuji.
Is there any public comment on this item? Ms. Taylor?
Thank you very much. You know, as you may be aware, we are facing a fair coming up within the next couple of months, and certainly the sound system is critical to certain components that we think are definitely going to be for our benefit, for the benefit of our families. And so we really appreciate your support in that possibility for this upcoming fair.
Any more public comment? Here comes Denny. Okay.
Denny French, Carson City, Nevada, Chair and Panel. I'm really sort of a lover of Fuji Park. I'm a tree hugger, I guess you would say. Also, I appreciate the equestrian area and the rodeo area and all of that. But I'm a little surprised that it's not expanded into the rest of the full area of the properties there. And I know you divided it between park and then fairgrounds, and I don't see that definition when I see it utilized actually as a park or as a fair. It's sort of multi-faceted, expand-out type deal when you have either going. And I'm just sort of surprised that this is limited to the space on one end, since you had money available that you wouldn't consider perhaps expanding some of the speaker systems out into the park area for things that do go out into that area at a times. So that's just my contribution, and I appreciate this, and I look forward to the activities out there myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, then I'll bring it back up to the board for a...
Madam Chair? I just wanted to note for the record that, but for the sake of the budget, that we allocated $100,000 for this, so the unused will go into the undesignated fund and roll forward in the redevelopment fund.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I got it. I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the expenditure of $44,754 for the Fuji Park Fairgrounds sound system.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on discussion. You going to have discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we have four yeses and one no. Thank you very much. The item passes. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 22B, which deals with the recommendation for the board for special events. Mr. Plummel? Oh, wait.
And I have a disclosure.
Excuse me. Mr. Giomi, you have a disclosure for 22B?
Thank you, indeed. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I serve as an unpaid board member for Advocates to End Domestic Violence, a private nonprofit organization that applied and is recommended for funding under this item. In my private commitment, I have fiduciary duties as a board member. This redevelopment authority may choose to accept, deny, or modify those recommendations. Because the judgment of a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by my relationship, I will not be voting on this matter.
Any further disclosures? Okay. Mr. Plummel, you want to take us through 22B?
Sure. We're now moving on to items that are for the FY '20 budget beginning July 1st. So these are expenditures that are coming up in next year's budget. The first one being this item for the special event from the special events account with the recommendation from the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee for $4,500 for Taste of Downtown event. That was by a vote of 3-0. We had one abstention on that one. And then approval of, recommendation of approval for $2,784 for the Carson City, Nevada Fair by a vote of 4-0, with two were absent at that meeting. Actually, yes, two absent at that meeting. You have the, you have the applications attached in your packet, and I believe the applicants are here if you have any questions.
So anyone have any questions on this item? Nope. Okay. Any public comment? This is going way too easy. Okay, then I'll bring it back for a... Oh, we do have public comment. I'm sorry. Didn't see that. Please state your names for the record.
Green light. I'm Chelsea Simmerson with the Carson City Fair, and this is Carrie Anne Ortiz, also with the fair. We're hoping for the money for the tents because it's going to be better for the animals. We're hoping to create a more comfortable environment for the animals and for the children that are showing them there.
I've been involved in 4H now for two years with my children. I never got the opportunity to do it when I was younger, even though born and raised here in Nevada. The amount of leadership skills, determination, my daughter, as well as another child, led our poultry meeting last night at the age of 11. I've seen so, so much grow from these children in regards to 4H and what it does for the community. We do do the poultry club together, Chelsea and myself, and we need these tents to provide a safe environment for our animals, both on the grass when they are being shown and then off the grass in the barns as well. They say that if you give a man a fish, he has a meal. If you teach him how to fish, he can feed himself for a lifetime. So with 4H, that's part of our principles, is we're teaching our children to be able to raise their own animals. They can use them for meat, they can sell them. We're teaching them budgets, budget skills, talking to the community, different aspects like that.
Also, the love and compassion that comes along with raising animals. It's different when it's your sibling that you love and communicate with and an animal. It's just, there's a different bond, and it's a wonderful thing watching them fall in love with their animals and taking care of them, and it's really kind of fun as parents seeing that.
And for our community, this is some of the only opportunities that children have to see animals that they don't see on a normal basis. They don't have a lot of agriculture up here in the smaller areas of Carson City. You can have chickens, you can't have a cow in your backyard. So the fair provides that opportunity for them to come see a cow. I have an awesome picture of my 11-year-old trying to pull a huge steer across the ring last year, and that forever will be in our hearts that my daughter got to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And thank you for doing the 4H. It's very important. Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay, we'll try again. I'll bring it back up here for a motion.
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the expenditures in the amount of $4,500 for Taste of Downtown and $2,784 for the 2019 Carson City, Nevada Fair.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Oh, one abstention. Well, it's still, it was unanimous by the yeses. You're an abstention. Okay. We'll move on to item 22C, which is for an expenditure of $43,200 for the 2020 for the Pubic Plaza at the Children's Museum. Mr. Plummel?
Thank you again. A little bit of background on this. This, again, is something that's been identified in kind of the long-term allocation plan for redevelopment with a placeholder of $50,000 that has been over in, for a couple of years, identified for FY 2020 to do this project to improve the front plaza area in front of the Children's Museum. The project has morphed a little bit from previous iterations. I say, I will tell you, this has been before the Historic Resource Commission and Planning Commission required approvals from them for these improvements. It was, it looked a little bit different, included some play equipment and things originally with those original approvals, but through, this property is subject to a covenant with the State Historic Preservation Office because of funds that have been used for it. So SHPO also had to approve it, and in their approvals, they did not approve it exactly as they proposed it originally. So as it looks now, has really scaled back, kind of scaled back the scale of the project overall in terms of fencing and equipment and things. But it is a, this is a city property, city-owned building that's managed and run by the Children's Museum. The plaza out front has a lot of lifting concrete. There's some basic access and some safety issues there, so it is certainly a property that needs to be rehabilitated in that area. So they are still proposing on going forward with that, making it fit in with the downtown improvements, and they are requesting at this time approval of the $43,200 to do those flatwork improvements. As noted in the staff report, they would, they're still pursuing a little bit more of the improvement is, would be a new sign. I don't, in that photo I have up there, it doesn't have a picture of the front, but right now they have some multiple signs on the front and the fascia, and they would like to consolidate those onto a new sign out front. That would take separate approvals from the Planning Commission, HRC, and we would have to come back for that, but I just want to put that on the record. That's something that they're also looking at doing this year. And Benjamin Corn, the Children's Museum Director, is here, and he can help answer any more questions on the project.
Supervisor Brown Kaski?
A couple of questions. Was the elimination of the play equipment because of SHPO's lack of approval for a higher fence, or why was that removed? Because that, to me, was one of the...
Yes.
It's one of the primary focuses of doing this.
The driving, yeah, the driving factor was that the State Historic Preservation Office wouldn't let us have a fence higher than four feet. And the Board of the Museum felt that as a, as a play area for children, the four feet wasn't sufficient. So that's how that worked. So we'd scrapped the idea of the play area, and now, as Lee so eloquently mentioned, we're just going to basically redo the concrete, and that's 90% of the, that's 90% of the project.
Then my next question is on the $5,000 request for staff time?
Yeah. We had originally wanted to, we thought about putting into the budget some funds for a project manager or an architect or some such, something like that. So that's how that got in there.
Is it necessary?
Well, the thing is, is that we've had a lot of people that have donated some time to it. Well, I'm thinking mostly of the architect. He's doing, he did it pro bono. He offered to do all this pro bono. But the short answer to your question is no. It could come out easily. By the time we put it in, we thought it was something that might, we might need. Yeah.
Mr. Barrett?
So this staff request, was it staff at the museum who was staffing the project?
It was, yeah, it was, it was a general item that we wanted to have that conversation about whether it made sense to have, bring in someone to oversee the project, and we felt it better to put it in early than to ask for it late in the game.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure it wasn't for staff at the museum. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So then, in general, the other question that I have is this deals with tables, benches, furniture, and I had, and so my, not a concern, an issue to make sure we're addressing is we have standards for our outdoor furniture, like on McFadden Plaza, and I want to make sure that this is all going to comply. I don't want to set up any untoward issues that could arise, and so this would be subject to those same rules. And then I don't know if potentially we even have benches that are left over in our project to begin with that could be consistent and maybe work on that. So I just want to bring that up as you manage this component piece of the project that we're sure to meet our standards for furniture.
Where would we find the furniture standards? Where can we?
Mr. Plummel can help you, just to make sure, and Mr. Stuckey. Just want to make sure, again, that you're not putting anything in the right-of-way or city-owned property that doesn't comply.
And we'll work, we'll work with Mr. Corn on that. In fact, Supervisor Bagwell mentioned that we're actually selling plaques now that pay for the cost of it, so we might have some opportunities with that there to get some donations and, you know, actually I'll pay for most of some of these benches. So I will work with you on those.
The plaques that say that, like, the benches is sponsored by a particular family?
Yes.
Yeah, I've seen those around.
Yep.
Yes. Yep. So I'd just like to throw that out in the discussion. Anybody else? Okay. Is there any public comment on this item?
Denny French, Carson City, Nevada, Board, thank you. One of the things for myself is that when I passed this facility, I've seen the changes that have been put in, and I'm not real comfortable with the fact that the handicap provisions are the way they are. And that's just from the visual I'm seeing, there's not really a compensation for that other than around the building, I believe. If I'm not wrong.
There's a, there's an elevator?
An elevator.
Yeah, that's the extent of it.
Right, right. Having experienced the elevator at WNC and how many times it broke down on me just in the time that I was in a wheelchair, I don't find those facilitate basic individual needs. If you're an adult with somebody and such, and you can facilitate the buttons, and you can get the door, and you can do this and that, whereas a ramp would facilitate most of the public more, give them more freer and accessible and less caging access, and I'd really appreciate that being considered. Considering that, then I haven't seen on this particular plan if there are going to be tree removals, and if so, what was the replacement plant considered?
I can answer that question. We're not planning on taking out any of the trees. The way that, the way that we proposed to the vendors that bid on it was that they were going to, they were going to lower the trunks of the trees to grade level and essentially not, not do anything with the trees, just so they could get the flatwork to be level, because that's what's causing all the concrete to pop, is that the roots, that was the word I was searching for, the roots are pushing against it, and they can't, they can't make it level. That's my understanding of it.
Oh, that's my response to that lowering the tree. I would suggest it would be easier to raise the walkway and also do the proper use of reducing growth. They have lots of options now to make sure that roots do not want to go where you don't want them to go, and I think those should be considered before you start ripping at roots because you might lose your tree. Unless you've got a backup tree in your pocket, it usually takes a bit of time to establish a tree as well established as these. So again, I just, when I look at this, I go, wow. It's, it's important to take care of the bumps and bends in the sidewalk for safety. I think it's nice not to have a huge fence around it making it look institutionalized when it actually has a welcoming nature about it. So I like the gate sizes. But the ramp and the choice of perhaps my, not understanding exactly what this expert on trees may have in mind, because whatever I've dealt with trees, that's not a good idea to start cutting at their roots to try to accommodate a sidewalk.
If this, if this tree, these trees were to die because the roots were messed with, that would be, I think, a big problem, because the trees are huge. They've, you know, they've been there. It wouldn't surprise me if they were there for four or 50 years, and would be a big problem. We'd have to pay to have them removed. But I don't know enough about trees to know if what we're talking about, grinding the roots so that they're a grade level, I don't know what they would do to the trees. No one's told us that it would kill the trees. I will say that.
Denny French, Carson City, I would suggest that that would be really looked into, because trees are very valuable and at their age and at their maturity, they're a big loss. So I really want to have a little bit more to know about that aspect of the considerations. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we have on staff, Botness. Right, we have somebody look at the trees.
Jennifer's here. She can answer.
I mean, I would think, since this is a city-owned property, we could have somebody look at that.
Can I stay here a minute, then? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. We, in the Parks Department, we have an arborist, and Public Works does as well. So I think, you know, it's a city asset, being that tree. We can definitely look into that and provide some guidance.
Thank you.
I'd have, I'd have, Denny French, Carson City, Nevada, Board and Council. As it is, then I have to just say I'm not in favor of it. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Is there any more public comment? Okay. And I'll bring it back up here for a motion discussion?
Yeah, let me, let me try a motion. I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the expenditure of $38,200 for the Children's Museum improvements. When we get to discussion? We need a second.
Okay. Is there discussion on the motion?
Right. The reason that I removed the $5,000 for staff time is because you'll need to come back for the signage anyway. So if this becomes an issue going forward, you're already going to have to go through this process again anyway, so you can address it at that time. But I don't like the thought of approving money for expenditures that you don't know that you're going to need yet. So if it becomes an issue, then just address it when you come back for the signage.
Thank you.
And, and yes, that you'll accept the assistance from the city staff on the tree?
Absolutely.
Just to make sure we don't move forward with the project if it's going to cost us a tree?
It's a great idea, but I like this gentleman's idea very much about the ramp. But the interesting thing about the ramp is that the State Historical Preservation Office would, would look at it and say the ramp now impedes the look of the front of the building. And that's, that's the guiding principle about keeping the front of the building looking like it did back in the day. And it's a great idea. It's a great idea. We'd love to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And no abstentions? So the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to Agenda Item 22D, which is the recommendations on the cultural special events. Mr. Plummel and I assume Mr. Salinas?
Good afternoon. Mark Salinas, Arts and Culture Coordinator, for the record. I'll be introducing this, this item. On May 13th, to an audience of 44 people, our Cultural Commission reviewed seven applications for arts and cultural events for fiscal year 1920 in a fair, equitable, and transparent way, using scoring and rubrics and guidelines that I presented to the board last year. that I presented to the board last year. There we go, 22D. The seven events, as is usually the case, we have more of an ask than what we have to, to, for redevelopment to allocate. So with an increase of 175% in applications over the past two years, the Cultural Commission put in a cap of the ask amount, and I put in scoring rubrics. So what you see here on the Excel chart up here is the 1920 ask from the organization, what we, in the second column, it's what they were allocated last year. And on, on a scoring rubrics of one to five, there are six categories, zero being none, one equaling poor, two marginal, three good, four excellent, five outstanding. You'll see the overall average score of all the commissioners. What we do is we take that average score, put that into a percentage, and multiply that by the ask for an addition, for initial recommended amount. Usually at that point, it's still a bit over, and at that point, I offer some alternatives to the, to the Cultural Commission about how we can make that fit the number. This year, we decided to take, it was about almost 11%, as you can see there, it was about 10.79% above, still above the ask. And what we did is we cut everyone at that percentage across the board to get to the $26,315. And the $26,315 is the allocated amount of $25,000 this year, plus $1,315 that a, an awardee did not spend back in 1819. The awardee was under the impression that unspent monies was reserved by the city for them to, to use at later dates. It's, of course, it's a use it or lose it condition. That's been clarified. But that explains why it's 26,315 as opposed to $25,000. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have on these.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes, I, I've got a concern. These are for events, correct?
Events or exhibitions as part of the redevelopment policies and procedures 3.2.
Right.
That's explained.
Well, I noticed in here that The Wild Horse is seeking a new digital scenic projection package offered by MTI, Music Theater International. That seems like a, a capital expenditure rather than an expenditure. And I'm curious as to, Wild Horse works out of the BAC, correct?
Actually, their event is here in the community center.
Oh, it is? Okay. Well, this piece of equipment then would stay with them?
It's my understanding, under some of the guidelines that we put in place last year, ineligibleities include, speaking to the point that you're bringing up, major equipment purchases, property or mortgage payments, or capital improvements such as building construction or renovation. We wanted to make sure that the money that redevelopment allocates is actually towards a family event, an event that the people are going to enjoy as opposed to a roof or something like that.
But they would be able to use this in other events? It would be their equipment?
I'm not familiar, just, I'm not familiar with the exact equipment itself, but, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you on, on the specifics of that equipment. But it is my understanding that, that their grant was, received the average score rating there of 92.5, and that these guidelines were in consideration of the seven, the five cultural commissions that were there that evening.
Thank you, Mark. As you know, I was at the Cultural Commission, and my fellow board members know that, have an interest there. So I go to all the commission meetings, though I'm not a member. Secondarily, I noticed that there's LED lighting for the Celtic Series, which is in this as well. And the Celtic Series is at the BAC. Is that LED lighting for that event only, or?
So, you know, the BAC is, is a venue, just as the Beaudruck Theater is here. We do have applicants who come to us who hold their events at the BAC. The BAC is also, you know, holds their own events, and so they come to us also as an applicant. We review the applicants individually, and the application does include.
Excuse me.
A rental fee?
Expenditures, rental, artist fees, marketing, publicity.
So it's your, it's your view that the LED lighting is for the Celtic Series? I think while I was at the Cultural Commission, I understood the man who spoke on that from the Celtic Series group said that, that the BAC could then use it for other events. Is that correct?
You know, I, I worked as a costume designer for six years in New York City. And so costume design fee or material fee would be an eligible fee, presumably for an applicant. And on the other side of it, I can tell you that there are times when, sitting on that sewing machine, that what I was making was specifically for one roll. And it was going to sit on a hanger thereafter, not to be used once. If there was opportunity to reuse it again, sometimes we would, literally taking apart and putting it back together. So for the, for the explanation of the LED lights, I'm, I'm going to personally sort of see it in that same perspective of something used for the specific event, possibly once, possibly to be reused again.
Well, I'm, I'm Celtic myself. I'm not against this. It just seemed to me as a capital expenditure as I, I thought maybe the MTI was. But we've clarified that.
I'd be happy to, you know, attend the next redevelopment meeting, the next rack meeting, redevelopment meeting, as you wish, so we could maybe clarify that eligibility line. I'll read it to you once again.
It seems your eligibility line puts this in as, rather than not.
And that line that I put in was done with research, looking at other municipal similar grants. That language is almost verbatim. But, you know, again, this is the only, the second year it's been put in place.
Right.
Prior to, you know, no scoring criteria wasn't placed. And so we're looking to make it better year by year.
Thank you.
Suggestions?
Sure.
Mr. Joe?
I just have a quick question. I just, there's no significance to the indentation. Some of them are indented and others are not. Is there, is there any significance to that, that we should take from that? In terms of the names of the applicants?
The name of the applicants?
Some of them, it's just, some of them are slightly indented. And I didn't know if that meant something, or?
Stacy's looking for a conspiracy.
Every other line. It's every other line.
It's not.
No, I can, I can walk everyone through the columns, but I'm drawing your attention to the column in green representing the money of the $26,000. That was the final. The first column, FY 1920, was their ask, what they ended up with?
I got all that. I just, I just didn't know if there was significance to the under applicant name. They're not all left justified. I didn't know if that meant something or if it was supposed to mean something. That's all. It doesn't sound like that's the case. So.
It was an artistic, no, versus us math types. Yeah. That's all right. Sorry. Is there any other questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, see, and then I'll bring it back up here for a motion. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the expenditures in the total amount of $26,315 as recommended by the Cultural Commission.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Yes?
Yes, I'm on record in, on this board as saying that I wasn't going to vote for more money for the BAC. I looked this over very carefully until they did an audit, and that goes back a year or so. There was an audit, although I went to look for it on their website, because I was told it was there, and it isn't available. But that's not important. I do want to commend the BAC board and staff for, for doing a better job on the financial matters. And so I'm going to vote for this.
And further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No abstentions. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thanks for your hard work on that, Mark. Okay, we're gonna, let's see, moving on to item 22E, which is a discussion on a million 443, $237 for other events, incentives, and capital projects. Mr. Plummel?
This item is for the remainder of the expenditures in 2020 that are budgeted. These are expenditures that are ongoing or projects that are ready to go, or just authorizing the expenditures to allow Public Works to move forward with identifying the projects that would then come back to you for contracts. It doesn't include everything in the, in the budget. We obviously have some other items that were just approved. And then there's a few left in there that would come back to you separately. For example, if we have the utility assistance program in there, things like that still that are specific authorizations for specific projects that aren't included in this. But these are generally the annually budgeted expenditures or, and, and other things that are included in the FY 2020 budget, and this would authorize their expenditure. I'd be happy, you have the list. You know, it includes some of the things like Nevada Day Farmer's Market, Christmas Tree Lighting, Fourth of July Fireworks, Epic Rides events. It includes incentives that have been, already been approved. And then in terms of projects, I will just note that we have the Bob Beaudruck Theater Sound System that I know the recreation is ready to, to get on, right, as soon as July 1st hits to, to upgrade, upgrade the theater, microphones and sound. And then we have the other projects that were approved as capital improvements, the Third Street Parking Lot Rehabilitation, Aquatic Facility Pool Deck. And I did want to point out kind of three line items there on the lower right, the downtown street improvements, which more specifically, those are the downtown sidewalk improvements, kind of to match the, the downtown improvements on a side street. And then the undergrounding of utilities and gas lamp replacements. So I think, you know, Public Works will try to combine those to the extent possible where we're tearing up sidewalk or doing undergrounding or doing gas lamps to, to combine, to combine those into a single project so that the sidewalks only torn up once. Right now, in terms of the gas lamp replacement, the focus has been on Curry Street between Fifth and Musser. So that section, that's the, the part of Curry Street that was not included with the Curry Street project. And another high priority for the downtown street improvements is, I would note, is East Telegraph Street, and that's one of the locations where they'll start working with the businesses and property owner there. So I'm looking at some potential design and improvements. Any other questions? Well, they'll start, Public Works, they'll start working with the property owners and businesses there to look at sidewalk improvements to match the downtown.
Does anyone have any questions? Supervisor Brancowski?
Lee, on the Michael Hole incentive reimbursement, $58,016, this is the last year for that, right? That's why it's just a partial or a smaller reimbursement. Normally, that's $480.00. This is the final payment on that, and then going forward, that's zero?
Right. And the, and the projections, that is, and actually, page 501, trying to find the light I am, but I knew that's, that's, that's right. It was $480,000 in prior years, and, and at the end of it, it's a portion next year, and then zero following year.
Thank you. And then the Curry Street Lamp Replacement for $85,000, this might be for you, Dan. Can you give us an update on the, what will happen to the existing gas streetlights?
Yes, well, Dan Stuckey, City Engineer, for the record. So I believe I misspoke last time I was here when you asked a similar question. With the Curry Street lamps, we have salvaged all those that are in the Public Works yard, and the plan is to do a public auction. That would be the same plan with these gas lamp lights, is we would take them back to the Public Works yard for a public auction at a later date.
And that public auction will be well noted, so, probably don't miss it.
Yes, we will follow all the standard guidelines that we do for public auction.
There's plenty. There's enough for both of us. Thank you, Dan.
And maybe if Ms. Budge can come up, I just have a general question on the Bob Beaudruck. So what I'm interested in on the Bob Beaudruck is how long you think before you'll actually have your bids and be prepared on, on that project? Because one of the things, kind of what we discussed earlier on Fuji, and we've been discussing all along in projects, since your Fuji Park, I don't know how that worked out so well, but we have quite a bit of money that was left over that will roll forward. What I don't want you to do is short shift the Bob Beaudruck to make it fit for the 137 if we really just need another few thousand to do the job right. So I'm kind of just questioning where you are on the Bob Beaudruck.
So we should actually have the quote finished this month. We were able to find a joint contract through B&amp;H. So it's actually looking like it'll be, come in under $100,000.
Oh, we're going to have another savings? Wow, okay. How'd that happen? Well, then you're not getting any more money. Thank you so very much. Yeah. But again, I just want to make sure that we're getting what we need to accomplish. That I don't want you leaving off speakers or leaving off stuff to make it fit. That's what I was trying to get to.
We did previously talk about, you know, an ADA investigation of the facility, too. We could start on some other things that we've discussed if you wanted to take that direction. I don't have a quote for that, so I can't give you an exact amount.
Didn't, didn't the ADA, I was not on the board, so maybe I'm mistaken. I thought the ADA got funded to do the ADA study. Did it not?
I think we still have some savings from the previous one that's rolled over. I don't have a budget in front of me to give you exact numbers, but I can revisit that and look in that, into that and report back to you.
The, the grade in there exceeds ADA requirements, and I'm not sure that that can actually be fixed, or if it is, it's going to be very expensive. And then we also talked about the orchestra cover. So there's, there's plenty of stuff to spend money on there.
So that's really what the question is, because once we allocate this, what I was trying to get to is maybe you put some other bids or documents together and then go see, Lee, if there's some more we can do in the Bob Beaudruck, because we saved it in Fuji Park. So it's just a thought to try and, because we originally had put some stuff in the infrastructure tax for the community center, but I don't, I don't see that fund being available anytime soon for the community center. And it looks like somehow you're magic with your bids there, Eric.
But we also did just submit a Robert C. Hawkins Foundation Grant for the, for the theater as well. So crossing our fingers for another $20,000 there.
Mr. Barrett?
Just a comment. Congratulations for your work on both Fuji and the Bob Beaudruck Theater. As I've said previously, this theater right next to us can be a jewel. So I commend everybody on this board for showing the attitude you're showing regarding what we want to do going forward if we can and have the money, because it, it can really be a star in this community.
Any public comment on this item? Okay. All right, Denny, I'm moving on. Okay, we'll come on back up to the board if anyone would like to make a motion. Jim?
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the expenditures in the amount of $1,443,237 from the fiscal year 2020 redevelopment revolving fund.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I'll just note on one thing, if we're, this is the last year on Epic Ride? One more after this one? Oh, I thought 2020 was the last.
The 2020 Epic Rides?
And then '21, it would have to come back, right?
Right.
Well, I would just like to see that come back for discussion before, anyway. Right. It's okay. Well, it's just, just, right. I'm just saying for next year that I'd like to see it come back to talk to us in advance before any deals are made with Epic Ride.
Interestingly enough, I was at the Liberty Bike Ride, and I heard two of the trail people talking, and one asked the other, even though we'd moved to two back, two weeks back, are we still going to have to go up and shovel snow? And the answer was, if they want to go on the ride, there were trails they want to go on, yeah, we will. So I'm hoping they'll come back, but who knows with this year being so wet, what their attitudes will be. We'd, we'd like to see them come back, I'm sure.
Any further? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Okay, then we're going to move on to the final public comment for the redevelopment authority. Seeing none, then I will adjourn the redevelopment and pass it back to the mayor for the record.
Going to bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're going to take up item 26 Alpha. This is a companion matter to the one we just heard of as the redevelopment authority. This is discussion and possible action regarding a proposed resolution authorizing expenditure of $44,754 for the FY 2019, from the FY 2019 Redevo, Redevelopment Revolving Fund. We will adopt by reference, incorporate by reference all the testimony and staff comments and the comments that were made during the redevelopment authority. Any additional comments from any members of the board? Any, any members of the public? Not, we'll take a motion to, to approve. Yeah, go. You're not up.
I move to approve resolution number 2019-R-12.
Second?
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, let's take up 26.
Nay. Do I have to kick you again?
You do. Four to one.
That's because it delays for us to see them.
I didn't see it, man.
Yeah.
Kick me. Why'd I put you down as a permanent no? No, I didn't say it, okay. Kidding you, kidding you. All right. Let's, thanks for reminding me there, going too fast. Okay, 26 Bravo, they'll be in a, let me try this one and see if it works. Dan, I think I can, can I incorporate my reference, the disclosure, too? Or does he have to make it again here?
I, I think that's fine. If Supervisor Giomi just wants to say ditto or something to that extent on the record, I think that's fine.
You know.
All right, well, then we will take up item 26B, which is discussion and possible action regarding a proposed resolution authorizing expenditure of $7,284 for fiscal, from the fiscal year 2020 Redevelopment Revolving Fund for various special events as an expense incidental to carrying out the redevelopment plan. We will incorporate by reference all of the testimony, exhibits and comments received when that item was brought before the redevelopment authority, including the disclosure and abstention for, I think it's an abstention, right, Stacy?
Yes.
Disclosure and abstention by Supervisor Giomi. You want to say ditto again? Ditto?
Ditto.
Ditto. Any other public comment? Board comment? We'll take a motion to approve 26 Bravo.
I move to approve resolution number 2019-R13.
Let's see here. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay carried. Okay. Let's take up item 26 Charlie for the public. You know, we're going pretty fast on these, but we've already heard these once. So this is, you know, this is required by statute, but the testimony's not going to change, I don't think, anyway. So let's do item 26C, possible action regarding a proposed resolution authorizing expenditure of up to $43,000, no, $38,200 from the fiscal year 2020 Redevelopment Revolving Fund for improvements to the public plaza area in front of the Children's Museum. We will incorporate by record, by reference, all the testimony, comments and exhibits that we heard as a redevelopment authority. And the motion there was to reduce the $43,200 by 5,000, which the applicant stated was not terribly important to have. So with that in mind, any additional public comment? Any additional board comments? I caught that one, Brad. How about that? I caught, I was reading it there and I thought Brad's going to shoot me. Okay. Motion's in order.
I move to approve resolution number 2019-R14.
Second?
There's a motion and a second discussion on a motion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay carried. Let's take up the 26 Delta. This is the same thing. This is discussion and possible action regarding a proposed resolution authorizing expenditure of $26,315 from the fiscal year 2020 Redevelopment Revolving Fund to support various arts and culture, special events as an expense incidental to the carrying out of the redevelopment fund. As before, we will incorporate by reference all of, all the testimony, exhibits and other comments that were heard during the redevelopment authority, including the motion and that was made. Any additional public comment? Any additional board comment? Seeing none, emotions in order.
I move to approve resolution number 2019-R-15.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll take up item 26 Echo. This is discussion and possible action regarding a proposed resolution authorizing the expenditure of $1,443,237 from the fiscal year 2020 Redevelopment Revolving Fund to support various events, incentives and capital improvement projects as an expense incidental to the carrying out of the redevelopment plan. Once again, we will incorporate by reference all the testimony, exhibits and comments that were heard by the redevelopment authority when it took up this item just a little bit ago. Any additional public comment? Any additional comments from the board? We ready for a motion? Motion's in order.
I move to approve resolution number 2019-R16.
Second?
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay carried. All right, let's take up item 26 Foxtrot. This is a business impact statement concerning a proposed ordinance submitting Title IV of the Carson City Municipal Code to revise various provisions relating to gaming licenses and regulations. Ms. Hicks, you're here to take, I called you here, Sullivan. I got national hope gets on my brain here.
Thank you, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. NRS 237 requires preparation of a business impact statement as a prerequisite to the adoption of any rule. Consistent with NRS, I sent a letter to the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce and the General Manager of Casino Fandango, Gold Dust West, Carson City Nugget, Max Casino and Bodine's. The letter described the proposed code modifications and included draft of the ordinance. The Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce verified the scope of changes and advised of no concerns. A representative from Gold Dust West suggested some clarifying language that's associated with the ordinance, which is the next item, but did not have comments on the business impact statement. So with that, staff is recommending that the Board of Supervisors makes a finding that the proposed changes to the gaming ordinance do not impose a direct significant economic burden or directly restrict the formation, operation or expansion of a business. I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions of hope? Anybody? Public comment on this business impact statement? Anybody? Board? Anybody? Hope, why don't you tell us what this is about so the public can follow along? I mean, what the underlying theory is.
Essentially, what is before the, the Board of Supervisors as the next item will be an amendment to the gaming ordinance. What these amendments essentially do is they better reflect the existing operations of, of the implementation of the gaming regulations. Eliminates redundancies between state agencies and city agencies. It utilizes the correct language of NRS and identifies correct departments where incorrect departments were identified as the administrator. So it's essentially a cleanup of, of the process.
All right. Another, another request, another offer? Anybody in the public want to weigh in on this one? Board? We ready? Motion's in order if we want to do it. Motion's in order.
I'll do it. I can't do it on there, but. I move to accept the business impact statement as prepared and find that the proposed ordinance does not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business or directly restrict the formation, operations or expansion of a business.
Second?
There's a motion and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Those nay carried. Okay. Let's take up item 26 Golf. This is discussion and possible action to introduce on first reading an ordinance relating to gaming amending Title IV of the Carson City Municipal Code to revise various provisions related to gaming licenses and regulations. Hope, you want to take us through this?
Yes. As I mentioned on the last item, the intent of the proposed modifications is to avoid redundancy with the state agencies, to create consistency with NRS and to better reflect current operations. I'll notice that, I'll note that undersheriff Ken Sandich is present today. This really started with the Sheriff's Office where they were able to identify redundancies with state agencies, specifically with background checks. And so the recommendation on four, and I'm just going, it's about seven changes. I'm just going to quickly go through those changes.
That's fine, go ahead, get them.
4.4.020 is the removal of a requirement that the sheriff conducted background check. That background check is conducted by a state agency. It's a modification to 4.14.040, which is an application. And I have, I have a summary up on the board as well. The applications are submitted to the Business License Division. Also in this section, which was not in the ordinance but was included in the late material, was a suggestion by the representative of Gold Dust West that we clarify that each license is for one location. That's how staff interprets the code. That's how staff applies the code. So we don't see a downside in, in including that language for clarification.
That's state law, too, I think.
I beg your pardon?
That's state law.
Right. But he wanted to make sure our code also called that out.
Never a problem making laws consistent.
4.14.045 will utilize the term non-restricted and will credit our deputy city manager for calling that one out. Section 4.14.047, all appeals, again, will go to the Business License Division as they administer the gaming ordinance. 4.14.050, removing the change of location being subject to board approval. I think Commissioner Bagwell is the only one who participated with Commissioner About when you had, you had two things that came before you. One was a change of location. And what the code says right now is you may not take a license and move it to a different location without the approval of the Board of Supervisors. I am recommending removal of that language. That would mean location of gaming establishments would be regulated through zoning. There was no criteria provided to the board in making their decisions. Whereas if we use zoning, we have, we have either it's ministerial and it's allowed or it's a special use permit and you have findings of fact. So it felt like absent any criteria, it was better placed in zoning.
What section is that again?
I beg your pardon? 4.14.050. Also in 4.14.050, right now, what it says is if there's a change of ownership, that is subject to board approval. So if somebody has a license and they want to sell the license to someone else, that can only be done with approval of the board. That also came before the supervisors. I have left that section in. And the reason I've left that section in is because you have the issue of 100 hotel rooms. And if a new license comes in, they're required to bring 100 hotel rooms in with them. And I felt like it really needed to be before the board to authorize that a license be, be transferred to another person because the board would then have the ability to know that in allowing that transfer, they were not forcing that person to get a new license, therefore be obligated to the 100-room provision. So that was the thought process in not recommending the elimination of, of a transfer of, of the license from one person to another being subject to board review. Yes.
Before you go on, there's provisions at the state level that are a little different there. You can't sell a license to another person. They have to operate it for a certain period of time, then they have to apply for a transfer of the license. So I just want to make sure that we've looked at that so that we're in compliance with the state regulations.
Okay. Do you have anything on that, Ben?
What I can say is you did have a change of ownership when Horseshoe Club came in. I forget, I forget what Silver Bullet, I think, was what they called themselves and they were taking it over from the Horseshoe Club.
It's the same ownership, just different, different location.
I beg your pardon?
First, he's changed it at the Horseshoe and operated for
Right.
six months or something, and then he moved it.
Right. So what, in that case, what, what specifically came before this, this board is a request for, to transfer the license from Horseshoe Club, I believe it was the LLC or the DBA, to Silver Bullet LLC. So that was a change of ownership. And then what also came before this board was a change of location, although Planning Commission had already reviewed the location through the zoning requirement. So those, when those came before the board, there was no criteria for the board to rely on in decision-making. And so those are the two items I focused in on. And again, in focusing in on, it felt like zoning could address location. And I didn't see a, a strong benefit for a locational change coming before the board. But again, because I've seen ownership come before the board absent any knowledge that I, I don't have knowledge of the state law with regard to ownership. But I suspect we're not in conflict since we had that exact example come before us. But Ben may have more information.
Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney, for the record. In working with Hope on the gaming ordinance changes, I have reviewed the game, the gaming ordinances and code. And this is in compliance. As Hope said, the reason why we kept the change of ownership or the sale part was so that you could have some sort of control over the 100-room requirement. But as far as the state level, this is in compliance. And the state actually does, you know, have control over change of ownership or transferring a license. And so we felt that it was just a duplication for the city to do the same thing and have it come before you when it's already gone through the state.
I think we got more confused, but maybe I can ask even another clarifying question since that was such a lovely day for Supervisor About and myself. But I thought part of the issue on the 100-room actually dealt with, it was in a redevelopment district, which is why they didn't have to bring the 100 hotel rooms, too.
No, the, that was because it already existed. The license existed and what the, and I have it open, but essentially what, what that provision says is if the license existed on the effective date of the 100-room requirement, I forget what that date is.
They were grandfathered.
Essentially. So that's why they were keeping that license alive and transferring it from one owner to another and from one location to another.
Wasn't it also in redevelopment there on the parcel? I know we had this discussion.
There were some provisions about it being a redevelopment inted about, but I think they were state regulations. There's nothing in the code that.
The license has to be transferred within a redevelopment district.
And that's a state regulation, not city, though. So the, the 100-room rule does not have any, is not tied to the redevelopment district in Carson City Municipal Code.
So you're just saying that again, we're only talking about the 100 hotel rooms if it's a grandfathered license? So that we're clear, it's not for new licenses that we could eliminate the 100-room unless it's in a redevelopment district? Right, for the state regulation?
I don't think there's that exemption.
Or we're not doing redevelopment at all?
One at a time here so we can get it on the record here.
So you're saying the state code allows the 100-room for redevelopment? Would, you don't have to have 100 hotel rooms? But we're not applying that same code in Carson City?
In Carson City, in the Carson City Municipal Code, there's no exemption to the 100-room requirement for a new casino in the redevelopment district.
And the 100-room requirement is a Carson City requirement, not a state requirement?
Just to be clear, and I have the existing code section in front of me. 4.14.045-1 gives the requirement for the 100 guest rooms. Subsection 2 then says, except as otherwise provided in 4.14.046, the provisions of subsection 1 do not apply to any entity which holds an unrestricted gaming license on the date of this ordinance, the ordinance codified in this section became effective. So when we look at a change of ownership of the license, number two would mean that the license existed, therefore does not have to provide the 100 rooms. That's why we kept that in front, as something to come before the board.
Okay.
Two more items. 4.14.090, we're proposing to remove regulations on the sale or giving away of things of value. And 4.14.160, we're proposing to remove regulations on private police. Both of those items have been reviewed with the Sheriff's Office and they are in agreement. You do have a memo from me dated June 4th, 2019. And I am recommending a slight modification to your motion to read. I move to introduce on first reading, bill number blank, with the incorporation of the additional language identified in the Planning Manager's Memo of June 4th, 2019. Thank you.
I still think I'm just going to need a direct clarification answer. In Carson City, can we waive a brand-new license in a redevelopment district that does not bring 100 hotel rooms?
No.
And, and we don't want to? I thought that, well, I know that was all a part of the discussions that we had and different hotels were arguing about whether we should or shouldn't.[1775.55] different hotels were arguing about whether we should or shouldn't. Because it was all about the old Kmart location, and did we want to redevelop it and allow something, something to go there without 100 hotel rooms, whether it's an old license or a new license? Take that out of the discussion. So we don't want an exemption of 100 hotel rooms in a redevelopment area?
Well, I know Supervisor Brinkowski wants to weigh in here, but I, I think that, you know, to, to go down that road, if we want to discuss that, I think that's a separate, that's going to be something outside of what we've got here, because I think it would be, you know, we've got to be careful that we're not doing things that aren't consistent with, you know, what we're under with the old meaning law of it. We can think about that. Supervisor Brinkowski, go.
Yeah, I believe that was, the 100-room requirement was passed as an ordinance? Yeah, so the, the process would be that the ordinance would have to be repealed. It'd have to come to the board, we'd have to repeal the ordinance, and then create a new ordinance. But Mayor, I would like to request, based on the obviously, on the obvious confusion on this issue, that we table this item and bring it back in two weeks, which would give us an opportunity to do some more research on this. Because I've heard statements that say we're in compliance with state law, and I've heard statements that we're not in compliance with state law and certain provisions. And I got a call from a gaming operator here in town that didn't even get notice of this. So I know that we sent letters out to several casinos, but it wasn't sent out to everybody with an unrestricted license in town. And so I think that we need to renotice this item, too, because I think we would get more comments if everybody that had an unrestricted license were noticed about this, so they had a chance to review the comments.
Wouldn't that take more than two weeks?
Well, even if it does take more than two weeks.
No, I'm just saying you wanted to come back in two weeks, I say.
I just, I'm just saying that this is being rushed. I don't think that we're clear on it.
I agree with you.
And I'm certainly, I, I'm certain that not everybody that has a license was even aware of this.
I agree, and I think the notice idea puts it back, and that's fine.
It was a Carson City ordinance when Shelley was here. I remember when it was passed.
The 100-room is, is an, is an ordinance we have.
We, we're also thinking, but we would need to verify, that there is something in state law about the 100 rooms, but that applies to cities bigger than ours. It doesn't apply to Carson City.
I'm telling you, it was a point of discussion. I spent hours on this.
Our, I mean, I think our ordinance is very clear on
All right, well, let's do this. Let's do this, and let's hold this off in abeyance for two weeks. You guys look at the, the notice that went out. If you have to renotice it, that's fine. Then we'll bring it back. Take a look at the state law, make sure that we have some answers on state law on, on that issue, and then bring it back when we're, we're ready.
The impact statement lasts long enough, right? Forty-five days?
Go ahead and ask.
Is, so there's no issue with passing the economic impact statement? Okay. Yeah. Because I know that the, the room requirement's different in different redevelopment districts. In Sparks, it's 200 rooms. So it, it varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction.
Is the specific question that we're being asked to bring back relative to redevelopment areas and hotel rooms, is that the scope of the question?
No, what, what I requested was that everybody with an unrestricted license in Carson City get notice of these changes, and that we research whether or not what we're proposing is completely consistent with state law, because I don't believe it is.
Could you be more specific, I'd help us if there's a part that's not?
As far as the transfer of a gaming license, I don't think we have the authority, I mean, to override state law. I think that the state has the, the overriding authority there. And there are other provisions, like I said, where you have to come in and operate. You can't just buy a gaming license. You have to go through the whole approval process at the state level. So I just want to make sure that, that the provisions
Two steps.
of our ordinance are in compliance with what the state regulations are going to be, so that we're not saying, yeah, you can do this here, but at the state level, you're going to have to do something completely different. So that, that's what I'm asking for.
So Adriana, how much do you remember?
Do you really want to know?
No.
Okay.
All right, you guys, all right? We're going to, we'll just table it. I don't know how many restricted or non-restricted licenses we have, but make sure we give an adequate notice to everybody and bring it back. And thanks, folks, for, Ben, it's okay, don't worry about it. All right. All right. It's good, it's always a good idea to double-check where we are on these things with the state, so. I don't think there are any changes to this legislative thing, but we ought to look at
Doesn't hurt to look to see if anything legislatively hit, too. I'll go back and listen to the tape. I know what we.
You probably.
It was, it was a long day, but, and it may be that it shifted gears, like you said, partway through, but I know that, that was one of the appeal discussions.
Okay. So we'll just put that, we'll just put that on hold, bring it back when, when we, when we think we're ready. We'll do it, it's a good idea to go through our rules and regulations, however. Let's do 26 Hotel. This is the second reading on bill number 103, the ordinance related to improvement districts establishing provisions to levy the downtown neighborhood improvement district assessment for fiscal year 2020. Lee, any changes since, any additional comments since first reading?
No comments received or changes since first reading.
Any public comment on this issue? Anybody? I don't see any here. Are we ready, then, to adopt on second reading? Motion's in order.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2019-103.
There's a motion and a second.
Oh, is this the wrong number? Oh, it was bill number, sorry. What's the ordinance number?
Bill number 2019-5.
Five. I move to adopt ordinance number 2019-5.
Okay, there's a motion in a couple seconds. We've got third Supervisor Barrett, Supervisor Giomi. All right, on the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. We're now on concluding public comment. Anybody? Mr. French, anybody? No? You're talked out? Okay. All right. All right. Going once, nobody's here, so, all right.